Let's do have a quorum. I know that Mr. Spencer and Mr. Johnson will be here shortly. We had an earlier meeting today. Many of us had not had lunch, and so they went out to grab a quick bite, and they'll be here shortly. But by law, we're supposed to start our meetings at the time that they were advertised, and it is that time. I have not asked the audience what they're here to speak about, but I can guess. And I just hope that we don't get too emotional about it and don't take too much time. Just stand up and express your position one way or the other, and if you've got something unique to offer, certainly welcome you to do that. First part of the meeting is the Boyd Forum, and that is where, if you've got almost anything that you want to bring before the City Council, most of it's supposed to be something that we're doing well or not doing well, rather than actual agenda items, because we've got a place for that at the end of the meeting for putting things on the agenda. But there should be a yellow card at the back. You fill out your name, address, and the topic that you want to speak on during the Boyd Forum. This is not for topics that will come up later on, like the Government Street Extension. There is no cards necessary for that. During the Boyd Forum, you only get one minute to speak. We do make allowances for a little bit longer than that, but mostly it's for one minute. And Ms. Dubuson?
I'm the Boyd Forum.
You can give it to the clerk when you're finished, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to rise and thank Council and the administration for the excellent work that's being done in correcting the different levels of sidewalking throughout the city. I walk, as you all know, quite a bit, and I used to have to pay very much attention as I walked from block to block, but I didn't trip on the spaces. And the city apparently has sent someone out to grade those sharp abutments, and it's making it very much more walkable. And I think, as we approach the baseball season, to have those sidewalks be something that we don't have to pay such attention to is really an advantage. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And that's the only one I see that moves no council actions to be taken today. Mr. Mayor's office is represented by the City Administrator, Bill Reynolds. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing we have on the agenda today is the inter-local agreement, old-blown school property, community development block grant, CDBG, assisted demolition and clearance. The recommendation is that City Council, one, approve the inter-local agreement with Escambia County for providing the community development block grant, CDBG, assisted demolition/clearance of the old-blown school property. Two, authorize the mayor and/or the city administrator, as appropriate, to execute the interlocal agreement and all related forms and documents required to fully implement the project. And three, approve a supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for said agreement.
Council or committee? What's your pleasure?
Move or approve?
Second. Motion and a second discussion. Yes, sir.
I read that one of the staffers indicated that the nature of the monies that we are using to finalize this demolition has had some restrictions as to what it can be utilized for. And I'd like some clarification, because I had some thoughts about which we were going on this particular venture, and if the remarks that he made in the News Journal are actually true, it's going to provide some limitations for what I'd like to see accomplished. So, if you know what I'm talking about.
I don't, Councilman Townsend, but I'll bring Marcy Whitaker up here, and she can take a look at it for you.
Hello, Councilman Marcy Whitaker with the Housing Department. Are you referring to the article that was in, I think, what, Saturday's paper?
Yes.
Where they mentioned really what this project, once we complete the demolition phase, it'll complete it for this project as it stands now. If additional funding were to go into this project, it would be opened up as a new project with new funds allocated. Does that kind of answer your question?
Somewhat. What he specifically said was that, once we did the demolition and cleared it off, that the monies could not, or the property could not be converted to private individuals. My thoughts were that we might have some aspirations to do single-dwelling homes or infill housing. And I wasn't aware that that would cause some problems for us to do that, if we want to do that.
The funding as it stands now would need to be reimbursed for the purchase of the property and the demolition cost if it goes to a private developer at this point, unless that project were to include some kind of affordable housing component.
And that the city or county would take the necessary means of doing it themselves.
Right.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Thank you. Dr. Pratt?
I was just wanting clarification that after all of this, the city will be the sole owner, or will there be some joint ownership of the county?
The city is currently the sole owner of the property and will remain so.
Anybody from the audience wish to address this issue? Seeing none? Let's vote all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimously. I want to ask the committee's indulgence here just for a moment. This got turned in, I guess, as right as Ms. Dubuson was speaking. I'm sorry I didn't get that. Ms. Kathy Till regarding Florida League of Cities wants to speak to us briefly. Welcome, Ms. Till.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. I'm here on behalf of the Florida League of Cities. I just wanted to take an opportunity for a couple of minutes and introduce myself. I'm going to be working with the League of Cities in the coming year on advocacy, and I'm very much looking forward to getting to work with Councilman Wu as he becomes the president of the League of Cities in 2013. It's going to be a wonderful year under his leadership. I know that. But some of the things that we're doing this summer is we're trying to build our relationships with our state legislators, both our senators and our representatives. And as you know, they've just redrawn the maps and have gone through the redistricting process. The House maps have been approved. The Senate is currently in session, redrawing their maps, which may impact who ends up being your senator over in this part of the state. I know that's one of the maps that they weren't, the Supreme Court was not very happy with, so they're taking a harder look at that. But we want to be here to help you build those relationships. And I have a little packet of information I'd like to leave with each one of you. I'll just lay it here on the table to pick up at your leisure, to give you some ideas on how you can get started on advocacy now in preparation for the 2013 session, even though we've just completed 2012. We're going to make a strong push to get all of our city leaders involved in advocacy over the next year, so that we have those 2,228 voices of city leaders throughout our state being heard very loudly in Tallahassee. We want our leaders up there to understand the impact and some of the unintended consequences of some of their decision-making, particularly when it comes to unfunded mandates and preemption of home rule, which unfortunately we're all familiar with. So, I will leave this with you. You know, I am one of you. I am currently a commissioner in the city of Apopka. I'm about to complete my term at the end of April, so I do understand what you go through as local elected leaders. So, I am here to offer my services. I'm here to help you with your advocacy efforts, and I look forward to coming back. Councilman Wu has already extended an invitation for me to come back and take a tour of your beautiful city. And I very much look forward to doing that and meeting with each one of you and talking about how we can work together on advocacy and strengthen those partnerships between state and local governments. And with that, I would be happy to address any questions any of you might have regarding advocacy or the 2012 legislative session.
Ms. Myers?
Yes, I want to thank you for coming and speaking to us, and I'm looking forward to the packets. And how long will you be here?
I'm actually leaving this afternoon. I have to go to the Town of Jay for their council meeting this evening.
Okay, well.
But I'll be back.
Good. I would like to talk to you again when you come back.
Absolutely. My card is in the packet, so you're welcome to get in touch with me at any time. I'm based out of my home in Apopka, so I'm down in central Florida, but I'm just a car ride or an airplane ride away if you want me to come back and speak at your council meeting in depth, or to talk at your League of Cities meetings regarding advocacy. I certainly look forward to the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to say publicly that I was very disappointed with the Florida League of Cities and their opposition to a bill that we had brought forth concerning imminent domain reform.
Okay.
That I was very involved with.
Mm-hmm.
The Florida League came out and opposing that bill, and I can't express to you how disappointed I was. And I wish, I hope you could take that back to Tallahassee and let them know. Thank you.
I absolutely will do that. Thank you for sharing your opinion.
And Ms. Till, thank you for coming. And the best way to get those to us, rather than leaving them on the table, is to give them to the clerk.
Okay.
And the clerk will ensure that we get each one of our copies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Including the absent members here today.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just as an FYI, that was actually number seven, the discussion item, so we can strike that at this point from the agenda. That was Ms. Till that was going to be here for that.
Oh, okay.
We just had a little bump.
I got you. Okay.
The second thing on the agenda is airport approval of construction phase services for entrance sign and turn lane improvements. The recommendation is that City Council approve, one, supplemental agreement number 10 with Green Hut Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $491,404 plus a 10% contingency for the construction phase services of the sign and airport entrance improvements. Number two, supplemental agreement number 11 with Green Hut Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $138,873 plus a 10% contingency for the construction phase services of the Airport 12th Avenue Turn Lane and a 90-day extension on the AECOM program management contract and Gresham Smith &amp; Partners Engineering contract associated with this work.
Councilor Committee?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second discussion. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yes, I got a, received a call today from a constituent that lives in Codova Park that was very concerned about the tree removal for the sign placement there at the entrance to the airport. The constituent complained of a large water oak tree that was there, and then it was left up, standing alone there, and then he drove back by a day or two or so later, and it was removed. Do you have any knowledge of that, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilman Johnson, I do not have any knowledge of that, but I can certainly check into it. And also, Melinda is here, if you'd like to talk to her about it. I don't know if she has knowledge of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I received the call, and I believe the gentleman's watching on his computer at home. Thank you.
Excellent.
Councilman Johnson, members of council, you may remember last year, Councilman Johnson, you actually went out there. That tree that you saw was the split tree.
Okay.
It was left up, but it was determined that it would not be able to survive the construction. Basically, this tree removal is taking place because you authorized several months ago for us to move or relocate the electrical boxes, Gulf Power's electrical boxes. We're moving them back, and as part of that relocation, they asked us to remove that tree line, which was planned for the sign project, so that if they put the new power boxes in, and later on they came in and had to relocate, remove that tree, the roots might damage the electrical box. So, it was all in conjunction with relocating those electrical boxes.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I know he'll appreciate the explanation at home. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more? Discussion? Audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass this unanimously. Item number three, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The third item on our agenda is award of bid 13 TAC 009, demolition of the former National Guard armory. The recommendation is that City Council award a contract for the demolition of the former National Guard armory located at the Pensacola International Airport to Craftsman Concrete Contractors of Pensacola, Florida, the lowest and most responsible bid in the amount of $93,422, excuse me, dollars, plus a 10% contingency. Further, that City Council approve a supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for the full cost of the demolition of the property.
Move the approval?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Dr. Pratt?
I was hoping that we could make sure that, so, the city's going to pay to demolish it, then the airport's going to buy it from us, and the airport will then reimburse the city for the demolition cost?
Melinda Crawford can help you with that question. Councilwoman Pratt?
Thanks.
Councilwoman Pratt, members of council, yes, that's absolutely correct. The airport will be purchasing the Reserve Center with the funding from a state infrastructure bank loan, which will not be available until July. And at that point in July, we will be asking for a resolution that will transfer the property to the airport, and we will reimburse not only for the property, but for all expenses incurred by the city to date.
Thank you. Anyone else on committee? Mr. Townsend?
I'm just wondering if I could get some clarification on the last sentence and the recommendation regarding the supplemental resolution for a complete cost of demolition. It's going to cost more than the 93, what does that mean?
No, sir. It's going to cost the $93,000, but budget, it had not been budgeted this year to come from the city funds. It was going to be coming from the airport funds, but those funds will not be available from the airport until July. So, we're asking through this resolution that you authorize the city to do it, and then we will reimburse the city for those expenses. And that's the full amount is what you're being asked to authorize.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number four, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number four is subject award of contract, Government Street Connection at 9th Avenue. The recommendation is that City Council award a contract for the construction of the Government Street Connection at 9th Avenue to Floyd Brothers of Pensacola, Florida, the lowest and most responsible quote in the amount of $77,777.77, plus a 10% contingency. Further, that City Council appropriate $100,000 from local option gasoline tax funded by a transfer from engineering services in FY 2012 for street reconstruction.
Move to approve. Second. Here is a motion and a second before we begin discussion on this issue. I'm just anticipating this is what the crowd is out in the audience for. And just so, just so you know that I want everybody that wants to be heard to be heard. And, but first, I'd like to see everybody that is opposed to this to just rise, so we get a sense of what the room's position is. Okay, that's about what I thought. Okay, now, thank you. And the reason I wanted to do that is people get up to speak to this issue. The first speakers are likely to go on just a little bit longer than what the others. And I'm, well, I'm asking for it to be that, that way. If somebody has already said something that you agree with and you still want to speak, is please just come to the mic, state your name, and your address, and say, "I do not support this." Sometimes we can get bogged down with having 10 people take up their full time and say exactly the same thing over and over again. I'm just not sure it's real productive. But I do want to hear what your position is on it. So, I'm going to open up discussion to the committee members first. There'll be a point where the public will come. Yes. Yes.
We haven't had a discussion. There's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
And are we going to have a discussion before we hear from the public?
That's what I was just saying, is we're going to have discussion by the committee members first.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And so, anyway, when we're well into that discussion there, there'll be a point where the public is allowed to speak. Again, just come to the mic right there. And in interest of time, too, if you've, there's someone at the mic already, the next speaker should fall in line right behind him, and just try not to clog up the aisle way there too much. All right, who wants to speak first on this? Mr. Spencer? I might as well come right out of the starting gate first. And certainly, I want to share with everyone in the audience that this is democracy in its best form, as we are all here able to share opinions. I want to tell my fellow committee of the whole members, this is probably my first exciting time to be at the end of the diving board like this for the diving contest since being elected. And again, I appreciate everyone using the letters, using email, phones, et cetera, to share their concerns with me. I hope that everyone understands that I am approaching this from the perspective of, I guess, as an architect and an urban planner, also someone that is a resident, a property owner in the district. But most importantly, I hope that this afternoon, we are able to move through this and that I can gain the support of fellow committee members, because the more and more I research this, the more I recognize and recall that there was previous action, governmental action at this level, that has endorsed the restoration of this grid. And as time goes on and on, this sort of interrupted pattern, which became more and more a feeling of permanence, obviously, is what has resulted in people here protesting any of this, the modification that's before us. But again, I welcome everyone's dialogue. I won't take anything personally, and I ask that you'll do the same for me. Mr. Spencer, my response to you is this. I do remember taking action, and I do support the extension. However, the previous maps that I've seen showed a traffic circle there, a rotary, and that made complete sense to me. The drawing I saw this past week has this, really, your only good option is turning right, and that's not even really a good option, right into that little turn lane right there. It seems somewhat dangerous and not all that productive. And I could easily, and I haven't made up my mind on which way I'm going to support it. I want to listen to my fellow committee members and the public. But to me, it would just make much more sense for that to go into a rotary, rather than it's designed right now. I know we're constrained somewhat by funds, but Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Barker are both clever individuals, and I think that if we're committed to doing this and we put the rotary in there, they can find the funds. So, I'm not putting you on the spot right now, Mr. Reynolds. That's just my position. It'd be a whole lot easier for me to support it if we had the rotary. I understand. Absolutely. Okay.
And, Mr. President, if I can address that a little bit and talk a little bit about the history we've kind of alluded to. First of all, the funding available for this project, if we were to do a rotary, you're looking at half a million dollars or more, at least. We don't have that. What we have, and in fact, if you'll remember, although nobody here was currently on the council at the time, but in January of 1989, this issue came up, and the, at that point, the total amount that was actually estimated to cost to open this up in such a rotary was about $470,000. But the intent was for this to be open as of 1989. And of course, since then, we've had both the historic district plan as well as the CRA plan, both which have adopted the opening of 9th as well. So...
But the CRA plan also included the rotary?
That is correct, but the overall goal was to open this particular piece. Now, what we did is that we looked at it, and part of the problem was, frankly, is that we were trying to find a way to do it within the constraints that we had, and the rotary seemed to be the idea. The problem that we have at this point, though, is more than just a funding problem. It's also a design problem when it comes to the rotary. There's simply not enough space to put the rotary there. We would actually have to push out into the bay a degree in order to have enough space to put a rotary in there. But probably the bigger issue is, is that when we were designing this particular right-in, right-out, and that's exactly what it is, which is the safe way to do this, and also frankly, really cuts down on any traffic that would come in there. It makes it a design that would be for individuals that actually have some business in that particular area. Because if you're coming down 9th, and you go in and you right-turn in, which is the only way you can come in from 9th, you can't come off bay and turn in, for example. You can only come in from 9th. If, for example, I used to take that route to work every day, and I would come down 9th, and then I would take a right on Bayfront, it would make no sense for me, if I was coming to City Hall or anywhere else that wasn't in the particular neighborhood, to go down that road. And the reason for that is, is because it's not quicker for me to do that. So, we had that, and that was part of our concern, was keeping the traffic counts in mind, as well as safety. And that's how we came up with the right-in and right-out.
Well, the right-in makes sense. The right-out is really the heartache that I have with the current plan. Okay.
And again, that will cut down on the traffic as well, because if you think about it, if you're doing the right-out, you're coming from this way, and you're going to go right-out, and then you're going to head back that way. So, essentially, you know, it doesn't make sense then to do that unless you have a reason to do that.
Okay.
In other words, it's not, it's not going to be, and it's not designed for individuals to use as shortcuts or any other manners.
I understand. Thank you for that explanation. Anyone else on committee? Ms. Myers?
I'm going to withhold most of my comments until I hear from the public. But I have a number of concerns I'll address at this point. One is the email I received this afternoon, or this morning, from Mr. Reynolds, which is just three sentences. I'll read it real quick. Well, the last sentence. You sent a copy of what appears to be an architectural rendering of the rotary concept. And it says here in the email, it says, "The 2010 CRA plan recommends this connection by text reference to the historic district master plan," and in graphics. I'm just wondering if this isn't an issue that should be before the CRA, rather than the City Council at this point? Let me ask our CRA chairman.
You have a CR plan, CRA plan out there that specifically calls for opening this particular roadway. And that is what we're attempting to do here.
Well, I'm kind of thinking this should have come before the CRA. Yes?
Can I, I'll address that just briefly. The council is actually the one who approves the CRA master plan. The CRA's job is really to spend the money.
Right.
And this money is not coming from the CRA, and therefore, the council is welcome to spend money in the CRA as much as they want, and the CRA should welcome that, and if we can say it sort of goes along with the CRA plan. I'm just clarifying. I think it is appropriate to come to the council, because this is city dollars, not CRA dollars that we're...
Okay. Well, I was just wondering about that sentence. The second thing is, has there been a traffic study done to support the recommendation that's being made today?
Mr. Garza?
Good afternoon. Councilwoman Myers, with regard to the reopening of Government Street at 9th Avenue. No, we haven't studied it, but we know the traffic volumes. And from a personal knowledge of the area, we know that south end of 9th Avenue's got a very low traffic flow. We know that the east end of Government Street's got a very low traffic flow. And as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, the proposed connection will not facilitate through traffic, will only be a benefit to local traffic. So, we see no problem with making this type connection at that location.
Okay. Well, why is it being, why is this recommendation being made? Do we have a problem at this time with the way it is now?
The issue has always been to try to reconnect Government Street to 9th Avenue in the Bayfront location. Of course, the ideal situation was the proposed roundabout, but as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, we do have an issue with having adequate property for that roundabout. We also have an issue with Bayfront Parkway being a state road and a four-lane highway. It's kind of hard to make a four-lane road merge with a two-lane road in a roundabout scenario. So, we developed a concept for a roundabout, but it called for the two-laning of Bayfront Parkway and kind of taking Bayfront up and diverting it to the north a little bit to create the land necessary to do that, and to also bring the adjacent roadways in... create the land necessary to do that, and to also bring the adjacent roadways in radial to the roundabout. The Gingaros Plan kind of showed an oval in their arrangement, and it's difficult to make an oval work for a roundabout, in that you really need to have incoming traffic come in radially to really have the calming effect. If they come in, more on a tangent, then it becomes more of just a chicane where people will like to do the drive, but...
Well, how is this going to improve? What's it designed to, I know it says to improve the flow of traffic, but...
It's just going to enhance local traffic in that southeast quadrant of the historic district. Instead of having to go into the middle of the district, go to the perimeter, and come back out the same way, you'll be able to enter in that southeast quadrant.
Okay. Well, I'm eager to hear from the people who are going to be most impacted by this. I don't know if there was a community meeting prior to this to discuss this and get input from people who are going to be most impacted, so I'll withhold any other questions that I have until I hear from the public.
Quick question. Do we have a map that we could put up there so we can look at it and see what we're talking about? No map? Where does she take it? To the clerk or, I mean, for everybody, because I'm sitting here and I'm listening, but...
Anybody else from the committee?
First person would like to come from this side. Please give your name and address.
My name is David Dodson. I've been a developer and a planner down in the historical district since about 1967, thereabouts. And 32 years ago, we were at the same place that we are now. Two days' notice, at best, for the closing or opening of Government Street. Back in 1980, we had 95% of the people on Government Street wanted to keep at least a right-in. At that time, it took commercial monies to restore these buildings. Now, 30 years later, it's a residential neighborhood. And so my point being, back in 1980, because of the decisions that were hastily made without people's input, we lost 30 to 35% of the buildings in the historical district. 32 years later, I don't see why it is a rush without the input of the neighborhood, without an open process, that we need to rush through this, because we don't know what the ramifications are going to be. If you had said, you know, 32 years ago, "We're going to lose 35% of our historical buildings," I think they would have gone and allowed a right-in. Today, I'm not sure if I'm for the right-in. I'm definitely not for the right-out. And so I don't ask the council to table this until a thorough investigation with the people's input, the people of the neighborhood, you know. I hear about the CRA. I never get notices from CRA. I never get notices from DIB. What those boards do, they do almost in a vacuum, you know. The people are not included in those decisions. So I ask that we delay this and have an open discussion, and then when the decisions are made, I think we'd have a better consensus. Thank you.
Let me add your question. Ask Mr. Dodson.
Do you have a question for him?
Yeah, well, are you stating that you did not have an input, that you did not have any...
Zero, zero, zero. And I have a residential property. It's vacant, but I intend to build on it one day within about 100, maybe 120 feet of that intersection, and I was never, ever notified.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. I speak against this. I'm Stan Tarter. I live in Pensacola, and I work part-time at 537 East Government Street. I'm very disappointed we haven't got any information as to the traffic impact. The only reason I see that the opening would do any good would be provide better communication from the south end of Ninth Avenue into the city and out of the city. Now, we already got good communication that we are, because O'Remana exits on Ninth Avenue and goes all the way through the city. And just to the south of Government Street, Bayview Parkway has, Bayfront Parkway has access from Ninth Avenue all the way into the city. So I don't think it's a necessary expense. I say it's off a cheap expense. So I say, if we're going to do a job, do it right, and this is not the way to solve the problem. I think the problem is, would be greater resulting, have the historical area almost destroyed by having this main artery, Government Street, going directly into Ninth Avenue. I think the city should be dedicated to improve the, and give incentive for development and improvement of the historical district, not to decrease the incentive for investment and improvement. I have sent the chairman, the board here, and the mayor my full report. It'll go too long. I don't have enough time to do that. So I don't know how we should spend money at this time for a problem that doesn't exist. My main concern is, the way this problem is addressed, it's going to create more traffic problems than it solves. Because as you see from the engineering drawing, going east on Government Street, you can only turn right, and then you must turn right and go back in the opposite direction on Bayfront. Furthermore, those people coming in from Gulf Breeze, from into Ninth Avenue, cannot turn into Government Street. But I think that this would create a lot of problem in terms of traffic hazard, too, because there's going to be all kinds of cowboys that want to make a turn across the other lanes, because they can't get in, they can't, they don't know, they come down, and they come at the end of East Government Street, and all the way they can go is go right and then back in the opposite direction on Government Street. And my main concern is, there's going to be collateral damage in the historical district. There'd be less incentive for people to live there, to improve it. We've had four or five decades of trying to improve, this is really the pearl of downtown Pensacola, is that area, and we do need something to show that it's improving the district, not making it like the shabby condition it was when we first involved ourselves to improve it. Now, it's also been talked that, the city has considered this. When the Bayfront Parkway was first put in, it was decided to make the cul-de-sac at the end of Government Street. Also, in 2004, a master plan was paid for, and it was very expensive, as many aspects of that report. One of them was, this should not be open unless it's done right, and this is not the way to do it at this time. And another thing is, the city should have encouragement for investment down there. This will destroy encouragement of increasing that east end of Government Street by making it into an artery runway. Thank you very much.
Was that Mr. Tarter?
Tarter, T-A-R-T-E-R.
All right. Thank you. I just respond a little bit to that. One of the things I do like about opening this up is that it will increase accessibility to the historic district. Remember, several years ago, when we first started talking about the pond that is over at Admiral Mason Park now being put in, there was two homeowners' associations that met, I think it was with Mr. David Bailey, and one of the residents there was, thought the pond would be a very nice idea, but for the fact that it would attract more tourists into that area, and thus clogging up the historic district. Well, I didn't have a problem with that at first, until I found out that I'm a tourist. Tourist was anybody that lived north of Chase Street. And so it is a pearl. It's a real jewel in downtown, but to enjoy that jewel, you need to increase the accessibility, too. And I think one of the purposes of this is not so much the automobile traffic, but to increase the pedestrian traffic down there as well. But I thank you for your remarks, sir.
Any questions?
No. I'll reserve, I think, just so everyone in the audience knows, typically, we, as committee members, are reserved to restrict it to two comments. So I've got to save my second one for the crescendo, but I'm taking notes.
In conclusion, I respectfully request this board to either table this for further study, which I think very definitely needs, or reject it, which is only halfway of even thinking about solving the problem.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, how are you? My name is Charles Milkie, and my wife and I reside at 624 East Government Street, right next to Overgroup and right across the street from Carrigan, Estes, Franklin, and McLeod. And we are opposed to this, and pretty much for the reasons that, the safety issues, which we discussed, because when you bring people in there and they block off Seville Square, it only feeds the traffic back into Aragon Park. And I have seen motorcycles cut across those pilings that we have there, out on the Ninth Avenue, accident waiting to happen. You're talking about a traffic flow pattern, somebody coming down Ninth Avenue, might have had one too many, decides to make the right turn, thinking they're going on to Bayfront, and they hook a right turn, straight across into Carrigan's Place. Children on our street riding bicycles are going to be affected. We have people, there's other ways to look at this, I think. If, at the time they were building the park, they blocked off Romano Street, nobody really had a problem with it, because all the neighborhood didn't have a problem with it, it's just people that were going into the neighborhood. So if we made some sort of entrance at each one of those, Romano, and I can't remember the cross street, Romano and Government Street, saying, "You are entering a dead-end community," giving them fair warning, say, "Hey, we could spend that $77,000 on electricity to light them signs for the next 40 years," to tell people, "You're going down a dead-end area, there's no outlet," you know? But we understand the traffic pattern and the traffic problems down there. My wife and I purchased that property, which overlooks the bay. It's a beautiful area to live in. Our neighborhood is beautiful. We enjoy the cul-de-sac. That's one of the reasons that we bought it. I'm not opposed to opening it up if it's done correctly, like a roundabout, but it needs to be safe. You're feeding one lane on a right-hand turn into two lanes of oncoming traffic and one coming onto it behind that. That's not safe. And if somebody misses that turn, it's even worse. Or if somebody decides to try to hop across and get out on the Bayfront Parkway, like I saw the motorcycle do or a couple cars do, there's going to be somebody killed, and I don't want to have that. See, I'm right at the foot of that, so I'll be the one that's waking up at night when I hear the crash, and be the first one on the scene trying to help somebody. I can't sleep with that, and I don't know if y'all will be able to sleep with that. God, I hope not. We need to get this looked at and studied, very much so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next. His name again? I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name.
I'm sorry, sir. Milkie. Yes.
I'm Rose Marie Bonifay. I live at 622 East Government Street. I've lived there a little over 10 years. It's a nice place to live. I don't think it will be too nice when this happens. Everyone, as someone said, was encouraged to move down there, build houses, improve that area, and, as Mr. Hall said, to increase pedestrian traffic down there. At the present time, we don't have sidewalks along that street, so everybody walks in the street. It's going to be a little difficult when that street's opened up for us to walk in the street. There are a lot of festivals down there. Government Street is closed. Is that going to be continued? Are people going to know when it's open and when it's not open to the public? There are a lot of runners that use that area down there, organized runners and races, as well as just the public. Are they going to close Government for that, as they always have, or is that just going to be a big, we'll handle it when it happens? I think Mr. Tarter and Mr. Milkie have covered most of the other things. I'm adamantly against it. I've paid over $40,000 in taxes since I've lived there, just in property taxes. I do think it should be studied. I do think it should be tabled for the present.
Please sit down. Mr. Spencer, do you have her name?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I spoke to Mr. Spencer and to Megan about this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amber Rushing. My husband and I recently purchased a house at 536 East Government, actually, just 14 days before the news of this connection was announced. Many residents of Pensacola don't fully understand why the access between Government and Ninth was originally closed. The theory that the state had in 1980's closure was based off of UC Berkeley professor of urban development study. He actually published a book called Livable Streets, where he gathered data from areas that have low, medium, and high traffic content. He found that the low-traffic areas had a better sense of community, space, and well-being. He found a direct correlation between happiness and traffic. Very simply, people living on city streets are less happy and more socially cut off as the flow of traffic increases. He also found that neighborhoods with a grid pattern had a decrease of social networking and street playing. Many gridded neighborhoods were dead-ended during the early '80s specifically to improve the street's social environment. East Government Street is a perfect example of the truth in his research. The new grid plan undoes exactly what the dead-end plan did perfectly. The increase in litter and cigarette butts in a historically zoned area, noise pollution, air pollution, light pollution, dust, the loss of a neighborhood atmosphere, and the danger the traffic poses to the residents will surely decrease all of our property values in a time when we're all struggling to increase or maintain our property's worth. When Ninth Avenue was shut down for the second time in under a year, in 2011, Romano Street was blocked off to impede higher traffic volumes in their neighborhood. By doing so, the city of Pensacola admits that increased traffic volume is a hazard to its citizens. Romano has always been a thoroughfare to downtown, and Government Street has been closed to through traffic since before a house was even built. The houses on Government, many of which are historic, are directly on the road with little or no yard to protect them from reckless drivers, whereas Romano has a large archway entrance and gardens to symbolize to motorists that they are in a neighborhood, a roundabout to slow traffic flow, and a large park on the north side of the street that will slow runaway vehicles before striking a home. If the plan is to go through, it is only fair that the historic Seville neighborhood be treated equally as the Aragon neighborhood. If there is not funding to complete the project properly, I believe it should not be done at all. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lawrence Pede, 605 East Government Street.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
P-E-D-E.
Okay. Thank you.
I had heard about the project, and when I heard about it, it was going to be a roundabout. Having traveled for many years in Europe, I know that roundabouts slow traffic. The way this is designed, I don't see it slowing traffic at all. I see traffic coming onto Government Street at high speed, and I know that the street engineer, I guess it was, said there's no traffic study, but I would like to know what will happen when the ballpark opens, because I can see people coming down and taking the shortcut rather than going on Bayfront and saying, "Oh, here's another way I can get to the ballfield." And it may affect the traffic flow greatly on Government Street. So I would like to see more study done before this is approved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Yes, I'm Kim Camp. I've lived on Government Street at 537 for going on 15 years. Was I correct that you all didn't know about this, and we didn't either? Looking at, it needs to be studied. One thing needs to be studied. One thing needs to be studied, the cars that come down there now, they come, since they closed at the ballpark for a while, people are coming down Government quite a bit, because I guess they don't want to go back to Bayfront, and they don't know where they are, so they wanting to just cut through. They come down there all the time and hit the dead end and turn around. You need to put one of those things across the road to see how many people do that. And I can't imagine how many people, they'll even matter when they get down there and have to go right and back around the block. It needs to be looked at, and talk to us, because I'm there all the time. And why was Romano blocked off? Was that so it wouldn't decrease, but you want to increase our traffic, but you didn't want to increase the Romano traffic? I'm confused on that, too. I'm not sure who this is going to benefit, and I wouldn't have bought there if there had been traffic. And I certainly, I have loved it there a long time. I do wish that it would be fixed up down at the end, it's an eyesore. We all saw that picture in the plan in '04. It's just got, it needs some plants, trees, some palm trees, something. And you need to see what's going on, these trucks come down. I bet, just yesterday, I saw four 18-wheelers come down to that dead end, four. One was a large gas truck. And then they have to back up, and then they have to go down to the clock. What are they going to do when they have to turn right? Why are they coming down there? And how come nobody knows it's a dead end? If you go two blocks down and you're walking or driving, you don't even see the dead end sign. You don't see the dead end sign till you've passing it. And do it, please drive down there and look for that dead end sign. Just do that when you get off work today. I don't understand that. And I don't know what you can do about it, but you could study it and see how you can do that. And then decide how you're going to get, how is it going to impact us? I would like to know. Anyway, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Hi.
Hi. I'm Virginia Wilson, I live at 529 East Government. I'm nervous.
Pull the microphone down just a little bit.
Yeah, I'm short, aren't I? Okay. Kim Camp and I went around the neighborhood and got signatures for a petition. And the petition says, "I am a property owner in the downtown Pensacola neighborhood, and I am opposed to opening East Government Street and Ninth Avenue." So, I have 50, I mean, I have 61 signatures. These signatures represent people on Intendencia, Sevalas, Government, Zaragoza, Crown Cove. In other words, our entire neighborhood. And these people are not just residents, owners. They are lawyers, they are restaurants owners, they are realtors. So, they're all sorts of people. And I would like to present this to you so that you can look at it. It does have their name, their email addresses, their signature, and they're all real people.
If you'd give that to the clerk, please.
Yes.
Right over here. Yes. And Dr. Pratt has a question for you, ma'am.
Once you get back to the microphone, but I was wondering, in going around, you're our best survey method right now, did you have people who said, "No, I don't want to sign that"?
What they said to me was that they weren't sure of it, because they didn't have all the information. So, I told them I respected that, I tried to explain to them, I did have the drawing, and I had some information about why the road was closed in the beginning. But they were a little reserved about it, they wanted to find out more information. And I think that's why you should wait to make a decision on this, because everyone wants to know, what is the reason you want to open this road? I think some of the people had a great idea, instead of, as Kim said, instead of opening it, let's make it more attractive on the end, where there's like an entrance to historic Pensacola. And maybe at the end have, one of my neighbors said, and I thought it was a great idea, and I think he probably will come up here and tell you about it, but you know, just make it more attractive on the end. And so, when you're driving down Bayfront, you're not seeing that ugly, those ugly posts up there. Maybe some planting, some pavers that introduce you over to Admiral Mason Park. And maybe we could have a Pelican there, and he's Admiral Mason Pelican or something, you know? And just make it more interesting and attractive, and I think you would get people to walk down there and walk across. But the way you've designed this, it's dangerous. You aren't going to walk past, through there. I can, I won't be able to walk through there with my dog. And now, I can get across there. But with all of these, are you going to have yields, are you going to have stop signs? What are you going to have there? It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense the way it is. And even a roundabout would not be easy for people to walk around there. So, you're actually stopping pedestrians, you're not helping the pedestrians. And so, that's how I see it. So, thank you for your time. Do you have any other questions for me?
No.
No?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
I did have one more thing. I had three people say they didn't want to sign it, and they were down going into Aragon, and they said that the last thing, they want it to open up so that they would have less traffic. They want all the traffic to go down our way. So, those were the people that wouldn't sign it, and so, I just quit going that direction.
All right.
My name is Buck Mitchell, I'm with Seville Quarter on 130 East Government Street. I do see a lot of my good customers, a lot of my great friends over here. I will tell you, we kind of joked about it the other day. I called my dad, who, back in 1980, he and Bob Snow were big proponents of it not closing and the reopening of it. So, I called him, I said, "Hey, the mayor's office is implementing your plan from, you know, 32 years ago." We, as a business, would like to see it open. We have had, we have a beautiful new building that we're trying to find tenants for across the street from Seville, and we've had two major operations look at the building and decline on it because of it being on a road that has a dead end. I do understand, it probably needs to be tabled a little bit more. I lived also on Crown Cove, which is exactly at that area, about 20 years ago, before I was married. Government Street and all of the downtown Seville area is a wonderful pedestrian zone, walking, milling around, but we're also a business district, and we do need to have the closing of it and the opening of it. I do like the right-hand turn, because when they leave Seville, they can turn right back around and come right back to me. So, I'm not real sure about the right-hand turn. It is a very new project. I have never seen a map other than two seconds ago, so I don't know if the public has been informed on it enough. I do respect all of my good friends that live in the Seville area, but we do think that from a business point of view, the outside people that are coming to do business in Pensacola, especially on that area, Government Street, have looked at it and have declined to do business with us because of that being enclosed area. So, I'm not sure if we're exactly 100% forward or 100% against it, but want to make sure that we get heard, and thank you all very much for considering. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Joan Smith, I live at 532 East Government Street, and I had the wonderful privilege, I'm a native Pensacolian, and I had the wonderful privilege of purchasing one of our historic homes built in the 1800s, it's the Hendrix House. Some of those homes have a side driveway, and I would, my friends would kind of tease me, like, "Joan, what are you going to do when you're going to get your groceries? You have on-street parking, which is public parking, which means I have no guaranteed place to park my car and to access my home." It is one of the wonderful little shotgun homes downtown. My question is, when this change comes about, I haven't heard anything mentioned about the speed limit and how that would be enforced. Again, as you've heard from many of our neighbors here, it's very much a pedestrian community, a lot of street activity, visiting and walking and sidewalks, as well as the visitors that come in the area and venture, and the bed and breakfast that come down. What is, does anybody, can you share with me what the speed limit, the proposed speed limit is for that area?
Well, I'm sure it wouldn't be more than 25, and we could even make it less than that. One of the things that you do have going for you on that street, and this shocked me, when we got into a street repaving discussion one year, a lot of the streets that were up for repaving were in North Hill. And they like having the asphalt that is torn up with the brick and the potholes, because it does calm traffic through there regardless of what the posted speed limit is. It's impossible to drive through there quickly. The other thing, and I used to wonder about this, being an old country boy, non-urban dweller, why people would want to park on the street when they have a driveway? And I found out, one of the reasons is the street parking is a natural calming mechanism for traffic as well. So, I'm not advocating for or against this project right now, but some of those concerns, I don't think you had actually experienced out there.
Well, I was just saying, you're getting in and out of your car, and depending on the speed limit there and the safety factors, I just wondered if there was a speed limit. And then also, because we do have a lot of large trucks, I mean, you said that the tankers and the others, would that be restricted in the area? Would there be no commercial vehicle or large?
Mr. Reynolds.
The answer to that question is yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mitt, yes.
I would just like to say that the chairman's, the president's remarks regarding the speed limit, even if it were 25 miles an hour, is purely speculative. We don't have any details on this project. And I will tell you, 25 mile an hour speed limits are not, are very, very difficult to enforce. So, what all of this is pointing out to me is that we know very, very little about this project from the questions people are asking. Go ahead.
Mr. Homeack.
Thank you, counsel. Jim Homeack, 3664 Pickens Road, Pensacola Beach. I'm a local business owner downtown, and I wanted to come out and voice my support for opening up Ninth Avenue to Government, primarily because I think overall, it's good for downtown Pensacola and the redevelopment of downtown Pensacola, both on a commercial aspect as well as residential. But also, I have, I think, kind of a longtime, unique perspective on Government Street. My dad used to own a little one-story shack at 630 East Government, that now is the two-story office building across from Carrigan, and suffered a long time in trying to get that property leased because of the closure of Government Street for the same reasons that were discussed here earlier by Mr. Mitchell. I also owned one of the lots at Crown Point at one point in time, and had a three-story building design where I was going to have a downstairs commercial and two stories residential up above. And of course, I would have wanted it to have been open at that point in time. I lived at 431, I think it was, Zaragoza Street back 20 years, 15, 20 years ago. So, I've been a resident of downtown Pensacola for close to six years, and would have liked for it to have been open then. And I currently have my office on Zaragoza Street about a block and a half away, and would like to have it open for that reason also. But I came here today to support the reopening without studying or seeing the design, and I remember saying to myself on the way down here, I said, "How are they going to do this?" Obviously, I think the roundabout is probably the best solution, I think it's a good long-term solution, and I hope we can figure out a way to make that work, both with the dollars and find the land to do it, because I think it does have a calming effect on Bayfront Parkway, and we need to have that for all residential walking up and down that area. That needs to happen, we need to find those funds and try to make that happen. But I did share concern with these folks who lived on Government Street, that, you know, we're going to open this thing up, and what is going to happen with the traffic, and how bad is it going to get? Well, after seeing the design today, I don't think it's going to get all that bad. I mean, number one, I won't use the Government Street exit to go home, I live out on Pensacola Beach. So, I'm not going to go out and turn right to go to Seville, at least not all the time. But I will use it when I'm coming down Ninth Avenue to return to my office. But then again, I won't use it coming in from, coming from my house in the morning. So, I think it's a benefit, I think we need it, I think we need to reconnect this part of downtown Pensacola to the eastern entrance. But I kind of like the way it's being done, it's a good first step. And hopefully, over time, again, I think there's probably a better plan that needs to take place, and I hope that is the roundabout. That's what's proposed in the overall CR plan, that's what we need to get to. But I think this is a good first step, I think it reconnects downtown Pensacola, and I support it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Homeack. You know, I want to ask for us to have one more person speak in the negative, one more speak in the pro, and then give counsel a chance to discuss this among ourselves, and may open it back up to the public after that. But I would, you've given us a lot to digest, and so, one more that's anti, please.
My name's Camille Barr. Camille Barr, 73, according to the newspaper this last week. And I am 73, y'all. I've owned property on Crown Cove since the late 70s, and I've lived downtown for 14 years. I agree with everything in the anti department that everybody has said 100%, with the exception of the roundabout. I think I could approve it if we had a roundabout somewhere. We already have some clear-cut examples to go by if we would just look at it. The end of Government Street and our brand-new beautiful park could easily be the cemetery with the cars running across Government, I mean, down Garden Street and running into the cemetery. And a car could wind up in the pond. Is that right? I mean, it's right there. If somebody runs Government, goes down across Ninth Avenue, they could wind up in our brand-new park. There is not even one full block that would separate where you would make the right-hand turn onto the Bayfront Parkway. The only thing that's there is Carrigan, Estes, and Rankin parking lot. It's not even a full city block. So, when you bring traffic to turn and exit out of Government Street going to the right, you're going to be basically cutting out, I don't know how it would be built, but you're going to have such a small area to make that turn. And the other thing, if we think in this town that we are going to be able to monitor traffic and speed, we have another thought coming. It ain't going to happen, not now, not back then, and not in the future. All you have to do is look at the Bayfront Parkway, which Brian and I have finally named the Bayfront Speedway, because that's what it is. And if you don't believe it, come sit on my deck facing the Bayfront any night of the week, but most especially on Friday and Saturday. We don't have a safe place to go with this. It's as simple as that. I don't know how this idea came up to do this, but when we talked about it, when I was investigating, just a place to ride my bike downtown, we talked about a roundabout. And now, if the roundabout idea is dead, I mean, y'all just can't do this. You just can't do it.
Thank you, ma'am. I need to hear from one pro. Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Burge, and I've owned a piece of property on the 600 block of East Government Street for about two years. It's a mixed-use property, so I think I can almost speak for both sides. But I guess what shocks me, and even as people stand up here and say they haven't really seen the diagrams, the mapping, or the configurations yet, is what was come up with. And as you're traveling eastbound on Government Street, and I've spent some time at the end of Government Street, you know, when you buy a place, you want to spend some time there. And everybody that drives down that street goes to the dead end and turns around. And I mean, big trucks. And I mean, big trucks, little vehicles. And you know, when you think about it, it's a very, very wide street to be, you know, to be right in the core of, you know, of our MSA and, and to be dead-ended, you know, as you're heading, you can see the water as you're, you know, two blocks west of there. And I guess, I guess, I guess my concern is that with the diagram, the way I look at it, as you turn to the right there, you know, people are going to be leaving Seville, but, you know, and they're going to want to get right on Bayview, or, excuse me, Bayfront, and take a left, and you can't. But, but they're going to. Traveling east, excuse me, westbound on Bayfront, try and stay with me. Traveling westbound on Bayfront, you can only go north on Ninth Avenue, and it makes no sense. If I were traveling west on Bayfront, I would get off at Romana where I've got choices. This way you only go north, and the only turn you would make is left into that retention pond area right before you get to Aragon or right into something else. I don't think there's actually anything else. Actually Admiral Mason Park is there now. So there's, it makes no sense to have that, that right turn coming off Bayfront and going north on Ninth Avenue. I support the roundabout. I know there's, we can figure out a way to do that. If you've got to have a sort of a northern hitch in Bayfront at the end there and then have it continuing, but I understand there's, on the south side, there's not a lot of land, and that makes sense. Gendros, when he was here a couple of years ago, never understood how you can have a four-lane highway turn into a two-lane road right in the middle of the urban core. It, it still doesn't make any sense. I also want to say that I, I read a lot of comments online from poke, from folks on Bayfront Parkway, and I, I guess I'm surprised nobody stood up from Bayfront Parkway where, you know, they call it Bayfront Speedway. They're, they're very much in support of the roundabout because it slows everyone down. And anyway, there's, I, I think it needs to be looked at. I, I think $77,000 awarded to somebody to do what we've come up with so far. I, I just don't think that makes a lot of sense. Anyway, but I am in support of opening it up.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If you have something new to add, please.
I think, I think I do. And I, you know, I raced over here from jury duty.
Okay.
And I'm going to serve on a jury tomorrow. So my name is Wendy LaBarge. I live at 227 East in Tendencia. I signed the petition, although I am not a property owner. I have lived in my neighborhood for four years, ever since moving here from California, and I got other neighbors to sign this petition as well. And I'm a, obviously, I'm going to jury duty. I'm a contributing member of my community in the city regardless of, blessedly, not having a mortgage. So thank you for letting me have this say. I talked with a lot of my neighbors, and regardless of whether they were against opening Government or for opening Government Street, the overwhelming consensus is this is just a really bad plan. This diagram where you can only go one way back in the direction you just came on Bayfront Parkway and only one way in from Ninth Avenue, it's dangerous. It's very, very dangerous. We see what happens at Garden and Alkenees. We've had two big accidents in the last few weeks, gone right through the cemetery. It's going to happen there, especially with the patrons from the Seville quarter racing down that street. Now, at least, maybe they would have a wreck at the end of the thing, but no, they're going to go straight off and they're going to cause problems. When they take a right on Bayfront, they're going to be making U-turns in the middle of Bayfront Parkway at all hours of the day. They're also going to try and skirt that one-way ninth to get around the other way to go to ninth. It's a bad, unsafe, dangerous plan, and you should think very, very seriously about passing that. But the alternative anew that I, I would like to propose, and I understand the business owners and, you know, we're going to get dragged kicking and screaming into more traffic into our neighborhoods, and that's just going to be inevitable. But if you want to bring traffic, you could look at the dead end at Zaragoza and Bayfront Parkway, right by the Barclay House. There's a dead end there. There's a lot of people that come in and out from the Barclay House. You could put a light at Bayfront Parkway right there, have traffic come in and out from all directions, and put a light there which would stop traffic as it's coming into where all the festivals and the parks are, and it would just signal to everybody, "We're now getting into, you know, the downtown core. We've got to slow down." And you would allow people who are in the historic district to go this way on Bayfront Parkway, to go that way on Bayfront Parkway, and from there, they can go on Ninth Avenue up north if they want. They can go in any direction. And the guy who's got the office on Zaragoza, the business owner, I'm sure he'll love that. He won't have any problem getting out to Bayfront. And that's the alternative. I think it's a good one. I think you should think about it.
I, I, I can see you being jury foreman. So, now, now for people that may feel, feel cheated about the opportunity to speak, let me just explain to you our process here. That this will go one of several ways. It will, will vote to table it, which, which is essentially voting to kill it. Or we will send it back to Mr. Reynolds and the mayor with very specific things that we want done and give them an opportunity to find a way to do that if they so desire and then bring it, bring it back to us, in which case you would have another chance to speak to that, too. But if it got tabled, there's, there's really kind of moot point in, in, in listening to, to, to more. Or it's going to pass. But it will pass, I don't, have no idea what the vote would be, but it would pass with a non-unanimous vote. I can guarantee you that. And so that means that on Thursday night, rather than this being part of the consent agenda, it'd be a separate committee item that we would vote on, and you'd have the opportunity to address it then. So I just ask for your patience in that and allow counsel to speak. And Mr. Spencer, you want to reserve your time, or do you want to go now?
Hmm. I, I want to...
And I'm going to tell you what, if you need to speak again later, I will ask consent of counsel to give you a third chance.
You've got about five papers over there. He shouldn't have too many.
Well, I, I want to, Mr. President, I want to ask you if I have the, I have the opportunity to withdraw the motion and...
Well, you always...
And yeah, and then, and then, but then may I also be the maker of the substitute motion after we vote on the...
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay, so he's, you withdrew your motion and...
We have a second.
And a second? Well, okay.
Once it's withdrawn, it doesn't...
Then I, then I can do my substitute motion.
Right.
Okay. And then I can do my substitute motion.
Go ahead. Well, I don't, I don't think we have to vote on that.
Mr. Paul McCarron?
Yeah, press on.
Okay, press on. Okay.
All right. I would, I would like to make a motion that we send this back to Mr. Reynolds. And with the directive that we schedule a workshop with affected, interested, not necessarily affected, interested property owners, residents, business owners, et cetera, I know that we may have 61-plus attendees.
Okay. Second, second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in, oh.
Discussion.
Okay. Mr. Gerald.
One question. If it's coming back, I'd like to know if there's an opportunity for a different design. If we, excuse me, if we researched all of the design models that may come forward and if that could be a part of what staff will be looking at as well.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Gerald, for that question. I think it suffice to say that we've, we've exhausted all options with this particular, because of the configuration of what you see at that intersection. And, and I have to add that FDOT has looked at this very closely and has blessed it as well. It's, even as we've already talked about, even a roundabout, absent adding land at the south end of the, of the intersection is extremely problematic, to say the least.
Okay. And I've got Dr. Pratt, Dr. Wu, and Ms. Myers. And, and the maker of the motion always has the opportunity to respond after each person who has something to say.
Sure. This is going to be my swan song. You ready for the long one?
No, 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 no. But as the maker of the motion, if you wanted to respond to something Mr. Gerald or Mr. Reynolds said, you can do that. Just keep it brief, and then you can do your swan song later.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Reynolds saying that, that he feels that they have exhausted all solutions, and I, I just want to remind him that as, as an architect, it sometimes feel, I feel like my back's against the wall with designing just about every solution I think's possible. Then I have had the lightbulb experience of finding a new solution.
Okay. Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I think that originally it should have gone to, to at least a notification of the Neighborhood Association so that they could have been included in the discussion. So I'm not opposed to the general idea of asking them now, but I do feel like we sort of have heard what will likely come out of that meeting, and then, then I guess Mr. Reynolds would get to reserve the option of not bringing it back if, if it clearly does not, is not well-accepted. But at this point, based on what I've heard today and, and my thoughts, I, I don't think that we're going to get anywhere with them going to a neighborhood meeting and then trying to come back because I think we've heard the general feeling of the neighborhood. And I just want to talk about what my reaction to this. You know, I, I enjoyed, the Gendros Plan happened right about when I moved back to town, and I enjoyed the, the energy that was put into that. And the, the overriding theme I saw in the Gendros Plan regarding this, this opening here and Bayfront Parkway in general was how to calm traffic on Bayfront. That was, that was goal number one, I thought, at least for, for that section. And, and as part of that, the reason to calm the traffic was to increase the pedestrian access to the waterfront and let us enjoy our, our greatest asset. And as, as a subcomponent of that was also remove dead-end streets because the more options people have, the, the, the less they are driving on superhighways. But in looking at this plan, I don't see that it's calming Bayfront. It's, it's not really acting on Bayfront in any way. I don't see it increasing pedestrian access. While I applaud the idea of putting another sidewalk on that side, if we put a sidewalk on that side and didn't open the street, that would be better pedestrian access than opening a street because then the pedestrians wouldn't have to cross another street. And then it doesn't really reopen the grid, I don't think. I mean, in, I guess I'm probably the, the one who would have the most experience driving in that area of, of the council, and I would, I don't see myself ever taking Government when I could, instead of Bayfront. You know, when I, when I make the decision to come to council meetings, it's, well, Bayfront will be faster because I don't have to stop. And so I don't see it taking any load off of Bayfront and probably not much of a load off of Romana Street either because Romana connects clearly to, to, to Bayfront. And so I don't see it benefiting even the, the people in Aragon who didn't want to sign the petition. I, I think that they'll still have pretty much the same load, will have the same load on Bayfront, and it would, will solely benefit a small area in, on Government Street. And so I, I don't see this as a benefit to the, the downtown, meeting the goals that, that we were trying to address with that CRA plan. And as one of the speakers mentioned, the idea, if, if our goal is to increase pedestrian access, calm Bayfront and remove dead-end streets, there are plenty of other dead-end streets there that might be able to address that. And so I, at this point, don't think I'll support it, even if the neighborhood comes and doesn't seem to support it as they did. If they came and were overwhelmingly in favor, I, I might be persuaded. But thank you.
And I'm, I'm going to go back to Mr. Spencer. Do you, do you have a response for that? Oh, okay. And it's Dr. Wu?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. First thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank the people out in the audience. This is government at its finest. You hear a lot of time people say they have no control over the government, no input to the government. I think this is one reason why local government is most revered over any branch of government because you can talk to us in the grocery store, you can talk to us in church. We're easily acceptable, accessible. This was an awfully difficult issue at the beginning, and as I sat here and listened, it became easier and easier. My first question was, why in the world, you know, open it? And somebody said, "Well, when you come to town, you come down Ninth Avenue, you're from out of town, the first thing you do is you see a bunch of barriers that say you can't come in." And then later I heard, "Well, people didn't want it because of traffic and whatever that's on the road." Well, from the way it's designed, the traffic going out can only, as you say, go around a U-turn, and the only traffic coming in will be coming in off of Ninth Avenue. But I digress. I'm using logical type of thinking. I talked to a resident of the area, Ann Reagan. I talked to a business owner, Bob Carrigan. There's a gentleman in the audience who I won't mention his name because I didn't ask for permission, but at lunch he told me he's never been to a government meeting, but he's concerned about this. And I told him to come, and he's here. Now, if he wants to let you know who he is, he can do it, but he, he didn't tell me I could do it. He's waving his hand. And, and I said, "This is your government. You've got to come down and tell us what you think." But the trigger that I got was when I talked to one of these people, they said, "How many years ago did the post go up? Thirty years ago?"
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years ago. They were not asked when the post went up, and they were not asked when the post came down. And that was the trigger that made me completely change my mind because government is not supposed to do things without getting input from their citizens. Now, I'm not sitting here saying yes and no in a final analysis. What I'm saying is what bothers me is the folks most greatly impacted by this, it appears to me, were never asked how they felt.
Correct.
And, and that, more than whether it's good or whether it's bad, is what troubles me the very most and a reason why I supported the excellent recommendation that Councilman Spencer made. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Myers, then Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I start, I would like to ask Mr. Garza a question because I don't want to say this wrong. There are some federal standards that the city has adopted when it comes to traffic controls, and it's called the Model Traffic Device What?
Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Let me write that down so I won't forget it.
MUTCD.
MUTCD. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
All righty.
I should know this by now because you've told me this so many times because I've asked you so many times about traffic calming issues. And...
It's a nice 3,000-page manual that if you need something to read on Sunday afternoon.
Well, I, I have actually looked inside of it. First of all, I, I want to thank Mr. Spencer for making the motion he made, and I, and I do support it. I feel very strongly that when neighborhoods are impacted, the government should take no action without fully informing a community and allowing the community to have input. I would be horrified if this happened to my neighborhood without input. Not only that, I do not feel the council was given adequate notice or adequate information. I've never seen this until recently. It was sent to me by a private citizen, and quite frankly, when I look at it, it's just, looks crazy. But then, too, I'm not a, a traffic engineer. The reason I asked Mr. Garza about the MUTCD is because I have brought up traffic calming issues many times regarding my neighborhood and other neighborhoods in my district. And I'm always told, "We have to study it. It has to meet certain warrants." And yet, the city comes before me today and asks me to support something, and there hasn't been a... been a traffic study. I find that just incredible. There wasn't a traffic study that supported the roundabout down there on Club Street. You cannot, this should not be happening. If you, if you have not done the proper traffic studies that comply with the model traffic regulations that we have, then you should not be bringing that to, to the city council. And I, and I'm not going to support anything that hasn't been studied.
Ms. Myers, the, the motion is, is whether, that have the public...
I know, but I'm just, let me just finish why I'm going to support the motion. I'm going to support the motion to give the public the opportunity to weigh in on this, the people who are impacted, including the city council, in order to get more information and hopefully a traffic study out of it. And so I hope that what's going to come out of the, the meeting, if we have one, perhaps the mayor's office will decide not to, to go forward with this and we won't have a meeting. But I want a meeting in which all of the players, all of the stakeholders have an adequate opportunity to weigh in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer, Mr. Johnson wanted to speak, do you?
Yeah, great, thank you very much. I'm going to support Councilman Spencer's motion to have this more vetted and, and I'd like to say that, you know, I've got persons on both sides of the fence on this one, I've, I've got calls from, from folks that support this and then don't support this and it's a tough decision as many of them that come before us are. And, you know, the, the folks talk about residential and, and there's folks there in, in Aragon, Ramona that would very much like to see this happen to, to reduce traffic in, in their neighborhoods. I remember a situation on Langley Avenue where that street was, was dead ended and the neighborhood was affected there because the street was going to continue on to Davis Highway. Very similar type, type situation. The neighbors that had to endure traffic going through their, their neighborhood all the time, of course, supported the, the opening of Langley Avenue to Davis and, and so, you know, there's, there's people that are affected, that, that live in Aragon that, that have to, to endure the traffic that they might think that, that someone lives on Government that actually comes through their neighborhood. So I, I like to think that the people that lived on Government, if this did happen, they would use this, this entry to, to their home on Government Street instead of going to Ramona. So again, I'm, I'm coming at this with an open mind, I'm looking forward to this public hearing and, and hearing what the citizens, citizens like to say. I've also liked to say that there's business owners out there that think that, that are suffering out there and that think that this might actually help their businesses with access and have people come to their businesses entering and exiting such to... So there's also business owners that we have to consider here at city council that, that supported, I think we heard from three business owners today that, that actually support this. So it also was discussed that the roundabout, that there is not adequate land for that roundabout, that we'd have to actually do some fill and go into the bay, which, which I would have a problem with. But, you know, all things considered, I'm just going to make mine very quick and not be redundant, I'm going to support Mr. Spencer's motion and I look forward to having more public input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. All right, this truly is the crescendo, right?
Okay, okay.
All right. There's a silver lining to this. Silver lining is I'm, I'm reminded of, of perhaps professional psychiatry or psychology dealing with dysfunction in families, it's got to come out in the open before it, before it really is, everyone recognizes that it's a serious issue and that, that it deserves attention by, by all family members. That's the silver lining to this because let me tell you, 12 years ago, I was in the corner office on the seventh floor begging our city manager, then Tom Bonfield, to do something about that amputation at the end of East Government with 16 concrete-filled white bollards that has contributed to basically what is the, what may be described as an atrophy-type condition at the, at the end of, of East Government. But again, I'm thrilled to have 61-plus other people that care about this because I consider that particular, what was supposed to be temporary surgery, it has developed decades of scar tissue and it's obviously something that's hard to re-approach and revisit, but I am asking everyone that spoke to please participate in a very thoughtful, doable solution. And I, I believe we can get there without needing to, to take more or push more land into the bay. But again, I had people every, Wendy who walked in the heat of, of August for me on a campaign, I've had Camille, Virginia's out there, I mean, just about everyone that spoke, I would consider to be very much supporters of most of what, most of what I've been trying to do. So thanks again for feeling comfortable about speaking very candidly. Mr. President, could I have just three more minutes?
Okay.
All right. Because I think it's very important that today we memorialize an opportunity to move further with this and not just have all of you walk out of the room feeling like this is the end of this discussion because I think it's just the beginning of the discussion. Again, 12 years ago, I tried to start this and could not gain, get traction. I think Councilwoman Pratt did a very good job of reminding everyone that the CRA's strategy included the most, one of the most important elements that Ray Gendros tried to drum home as he visited time and time again, and that was, we've got to make the waterfront more accessible to the pedestrian, we've got to make it, we've got to slow it down. So thank you, Councilwoman Pratt, for reminding everyone that that's part of the matrix and that's why I want everyone to stay on board. Certainly, I'd say, I want to say to Amber and Blake Rushing, please, please understand that you have just bought into a mixed-use neighborhood. You have not bought into Inverness in suburbia. You have bought into a mixed-use neighborhood that does enjoy the diversity and variety of, of different uses. And I am asking for your support and confidence that I can participate in, again, in a workshop that addresses the moderation of speed, not the monitoring of speed, but the moderation of speed. Traffic is not synonymous with sin or bad. It's, we can, it's how effectively you deal with traffic. Most of the people that are, that are living down here have chosen to be here in this downtown area because of its interesting variety and I, and I am a number-one crusader to protect, preserve, and enhance that. But I took copious notes. I, I have, again, confidence that, that just about everyone that spoke believes in the continued Renaissance of downtown Pensacola. And finally, on a technical note, Kim, Kim, I want to point out, please understand that opening the grid more fairly and evenly distributes the traffic burden and traffic flow. That is a public street. It is, it's not a private road, but let's look at how we can proportionally, again, distribute traffic safely and, most importantly, enhance and increase the streets, streetscape in a way that invites more pedestrian activity. And I had just two weeks ago called for a meeting with Gulf Power. We met in the Seville area and we have started what I hope will be an overall comprehensive study of the existing streetscapes and infrastructure of Seville, and this is just part of it. But I am a huge proponent of, of opening this up. I am a proponent of doing a great roundabout and I hope that I can maintain support for that.
Well, Brian, since you, since you addressed me...
No, 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 no. If, if, if for some reason we need to on, on Thursday night, you have an opportunity to, to, to speak then, but our rules are quite specific. We've gone well over the time. I share the burden for, for allowing us to do that, but it's time for, for us to take a vote now. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. I want to thank all of you for coming.
Okay. Do we go? We have specifically what that motion was there. Okay. Okay, okay, I agree. Mr. Reynolds, number five, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Take your conversation outside, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fifth item on the agenda is subject request for license...
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Take, take your conversation outside, please.
The fifth item on the agenda is subject request for license to use right-of-way, 509 South Palafox Place. The recommendation is that city council approve the request for a license to use a portion of the Palafox Place right-of-way.
With the approval.
Second. Motion and second. I'm looking to see, we do have a quorum still, okay? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sixth item on the agenda is subject request to amend Eastman Language, ordinance number 11 TAC 02. The recommendation is that city council approve the request to amend ordinance number 11 TAC 02.
Okay. You guys paying attention?
No, we're not.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Item six.
Motion approved.
Second? Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Reynolds. Be, be patient, please.
I'll second for discussion, I just have a...
Okay, for discussion sake. Any discussion?
I just wanted clarification, are the other properties on that stretch narrower? Are they the proposed right-of-way width or the current right-of-way width? Are we making it uniform or un-uniform? Does that question make any sense? Sherri's coming to your rescue.
Do you understand, Sherri?
I think so. Are you talking about the width, will the width of the right-of-way itself change or...
Well, so I guess we're, we're changing the right-of-way. I'm just wondering, the neighboring properties, are we...
It's actually, it's an easement running, dividing. It's an easement that is within a formerly or previously vacated portion of right-of-way. So it won't change the right-of-way width at all, it's just reducing the amount of the easement that is, I guess, hindering development of the property.
Okay. And, and so we don't need that easement anymore in order to get...
The only, the, the easement language, when the right-of-way was vacated in 2002, the easement was reserved for, for ourselves, for the city, and also for Gulf Power. Those were the only two interested parties that needed easements retained. And Gulf Power and city staff departments that have looked at this say that the, the width being proposed is sufficient.
Okay, that's fine.
Dr. Wu, then Mr. Johnson.
Yes, a couple of years ago, I remember that there was something from this group that wanted the land so where the parking lots would be law, I mean, parking meters would be laws. Does that have any effect on...
On this particular request? No, no, it, it does not. This is single-family residential, zoned property that fronts on the Bayou. They had a portion of Bayou Boulevard vacated some years ago and this would not impact that. It's, it's just merely reducing the, the utility and, and access easement on their property.
Okay, and the city has no problem with it?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I, one of my visits outside, Mr. Michael Allen of the EPH Preservation Homeowners Association, I don't think I have that name right, but anyhow, it's Karen Lassard's group and I'll name these folks because we had discussed this issue and they are in support of this. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Reynolds.
That's all that we have on mayor communications and actions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. And the request to amend the Land Development Code, Messer, that's just for information, right?
Correct, that is later on information items, correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Attorney, and I would, I'd like for the committee members to, to listen up to, one of the things that Mr. Messer has for us, it is absolutely imperative that on Wednesday at 5:30 in this room, that we have five of us, five of us, I'm here, we have to have a quorum of the bodies of the Pensacola City Council, a quorum of the Escambia County Board of County Commissioners, a quorum of City of Gulf Breeze, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And those three entities all have to have a quorum present. Mr. Messer has, has assured me that this meeting should take no more than about 15 minutes. I don't think a vote's going to be required on it. I think it's just a matter that we meet and it'll satisfy a, a legal requirement that, that we need to do and I turn it over to Mr. Messer.
Mr. Suarez, do you, do you want to make a few comments before I do, just to sort of set the table? This concerns the dispute, the conflict resolution process that we're mandated to follow according to the Florida Conflict Resolution Act. And it, it's in the context of our dispute with the City of Gulf Breeze in Escambia County over our exclusive natural gas distribution franchise. And at the conclusion of the process, I'm going to ask that the council authorize the city attorney to bypass the statutorily mandated mediation, mandated mediation and simply file the lawsuit rather than to continue to go through these bureaucratic machinations that are a colossal waste of everybody's time. So with that in mind, Mr. Suarez can bring you up to speed on our progress in signing a contract which has been negligible.
Thank you, Mr. Messer, Mr. President, members of council. Just by way of background, as, as you're certainly aware, Pensacola Beach is part of Escambia County, which makes it part of our exclusive franchise rights to serve Escambia County with the exception of the small area that the town of Century currently serves north and into the county. Over the years, we have explored possibly serving Pensacola Beach from time to time and either there wasn't enough business over there to justify the investment or some other logistical issues may have arisen that, that made us determine that it wasn't at that time feasible to serve Pensacola Beach. But it's always been of interest to us, as has Perdido Key and any area of the county that we don't currently serve in whole or in part. Back in 2007, the City of Gulf Breeze approached us and said that they had an interest in serving Pensacola Beach. They had funding available because of FEMA funds that they had been granted to replace the Pensacola, or the Gulf Breeze fishing pier. They chose not to build the pier as I understand it and allocated some of those funds to build a gas distribution system on Pensacola Beach pending an agreement between the City of Pensacola and the City of Gulf Breeze in order to provide that service because they were well aware that we had the franchise rights. Excuse me. We continued to negotiate, we essentially had an agreement in principle and we were negotiating the terms of the contract during those years from 2007 until roughly November of 2011. At that time, in November, an article appeared in the News Journal describing a system that was being built on Pensacola Beach by the City of Gulf Breeze. We had no knowledge that they had begun construction. As far as we were aware, we were continuing to finalize the agreement, yet they began construction anyway. Since that time, we have tried to finalize discussions and negotiations. We've been made aware by the City of Gulf Breeze that their legal advisor, Mr. Danheiser, informed them that they did not need an agreement with Pensacola, that they indeed could just go to the Santa Rosa Island Authority and get an agreement to serve Pensacola Beach. That was the legal advice they were giving it as, as we understand it. So they began construction of the pipeline. Since then, they have reopened negotiations with us... Since then, they have reopened negotiations with us. We have had opportunities to finalize an agreement back and forth. We've agreed in principle a couple of times, maybe three times, only to have that fall apart based on some legal ruling or some other interpretation of the way the document ought to read, as I understand it, by Mr. Danheiser. We've gone to the county commission about three times now, told them we had a deal, and yet only to see it fall apart. We currently think we have a deal in place now, and Mr. Danheiser is writing the contract to match up to the agreement that we struck. In fact, he was even in the negotiations this past Thursday when we met at our office. So it's quite possible that maybe that's the missing link that we haven't had in the past was having Mr. Danheiser in the room. At any rate, there is a possibility that Gulf Breeze will bring a document to the meeting Wednesday, which, you know, the group that is there, all the political entities that are involved, could possibly approve, and maybe we just execute it and sign it. Based on past history, I don't have a lot of hope for that resolution, but it could happen. At any rate, if it does not happen, then certainly the legal action that Mr. Messer's recommending will be required.
Mr. Suarez, this may be best answered by you or the attorney, either one, but just to put things in context, we sell, we're a pass-through for the City of Gulf Breeze on the natural gas that they resell.
That's correct, and I failed to explain that to you. We do sell gas. We're their primary supplier of natural gas that they, again, resell to their residential and commercial customers in Gulf Breeze. And part of, a big part of this negotiation is not Pensacola Beach itself, the service to Pensacola Beach, but it's rather the supply of gas to all of the Gulf Breeze system. There's just many hanging points, there has been, in negotiating that contract. We haven't had a contract with Gulf Breeze in decades, and we're trying to finalize that contract now. We've been operating and fortunately had a good faith relationship so that they accepted the gas and accepted the price and the terms that we imposed on them for selling gas to Gulf Breeze along this way. But it's not a good way to operate, and it's not a good way to do business. And so part of this negotiation includes their gas supply in whole.
Now, also, just so I understand, and hopefully the public will understand, is we're not selling this to them necessarily at wholesale, but it's considerably marked down than what a retail customer would have. So here we are passing on a commodity at one price that's affordable enough to allow them to be in competition with us. And we've never hidden the fact that ESP is a profit-making, city-owned business. And there's no mistaking about that. It is a business, whether we owned it or not, it's got a business model to it. And it would be like General Motors, selling cars 5% above production cost to Chrysler so Chrysler could turn around and make the profit off of it. And so we had the franchise agreement with Escambia County, and I hope they'll honor that. And if they don't, well, that's where Mr. Messer comes in.
I would like to make clear that we don't compete with Gulf Breeze, although if they do follow through with building a system on Pensacola Beach, we ultimately could compete with them because that's still our franchise area if we chose to build a gas system there directly in competition with them.
Well, I know we're not competing with them right now, but it would be them coming into our territory, competing for our customers.
Yes, sir.
And now, Dawn, when does Gulf Breeze propose to turn the gas on to the beach? Was that Friday?
I was told, in fact, the county attorney told the county commission last week that they plan to turn it on today.
All right. And this, you know, I'll follow up on this, why I stated it's a colossal waste of time, and why I would Thursday ask the council to just allow me to file the lawsuit. Number one, I want everyone to understand that the City of Gulf Breeze is going to start the transmission of natural gas to the beach regardless of what we do. I mean, they've taken the position that regardless of the conflict resolution process, regardless, they're just going to do it. So, you know, your choice is to just be a pincushion and let them do it, or fight for your franchise. The county, contrary to their earlier position of about nine to 12 months ago, when they had authorized us to give a portion of our franchise to the City of Gulf Breeze, has now taken the position that they're going to simply give the City of Gulf Breeze a non-exclusive franchise. Phrased another way, they're not going to defend the exclusive franchise that we've had for 25 or 30 years. They're not going to indemnify us. They're simply going to let Gulf Breeze do what Gulf Breeze wants to do. Now, why is the City of Gulf Breeze doing that? I have no explanation, but the choice is pretty simple. Either forfeit your exclusive franchise or take it to court.
Mr. Spencer, then Mr. Johnson.
So, Mr. Messer, what we thought we had was the support of Escambia County through the county commissioners. Am I correct?
Yes, at one point in time, before my employment, there was an email string that indicated that the Escambia County had given us authority to grant a portion of our franchise to the City of Gulf Breeze, which was really the basis for the negotiations that Mr. Suarez had been entering into.
And then, Mr. Suarez, that reversal occurred as recently as Thursday night? Was it a vote?
Well, this particular portion of Escambia County's concept of granting a non-exclusive franchise actually started in December. Because we appeared to be making progress with negotiating with Gulf Breeze, and it appeared to be about to find a resolution, they withheld granting this non-exclusive franchise that they've come up with until literally last week.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to, Wednesday, I'm going to go ahead and give everybody a heads up. I'm going to support fast-tracking this right to a lawsuit. I mean, I've been hearing about this. You know, I've got questions if the City of Gulf Breeze can use FEMA dollars to run gas lines for an enterprise they own. I'd like to have an opinion of that, if that's legal. If they can use FEMA dollars to lay gas lines. What also concerns me, and I ran into Randy Oliver at the post office about a week ago, and I was talking to him a little bit about this, and I was saying, I can't believe the Escambia County, the county that this city, Pensacola, City of Pensacola is in, that they would do something or allow something like this to happen. It looks like to me that Escambia County would do everything they could do to support an enterprise of the largest city in that county, in their county, and Escambia County is the City of Pensacola, in our gas service. I can't understand how they would not want the largest city in their county's gas company to be successful. I just can't understand that, and I expressed that to Mr. Oliver in the spirit of openness. I want to let everyone know that. But I, you know, I say, let's fast-track this to a lawsuit. You know, I'm ready to get some kind of resolution. We're talking about gas lines being turned on today. I personally have witnessed those gas lines being laid at Pensacola Beach, and the sand ordinance that Escambia County has being, I think, ignored, but that's a whole nother issue, and I'm going to stay on topic. But I would support fast-tracking this lawsuit. Thank you.
Now, the vote won't be on Wednesday. We just need your attendance at the meeting so that we can do the checkmark that we had the second meeting. The first meeting was Mr. Messer and other parties. He was our representative. This is the second meeting where we have to have the quorum. The vote he's suggesting that we take is on Thursday night, and I think it would work best if we had a motion before we left Attorney Communications here to give us something to vote on on Thursday night.
I'll tell you what, I'll do that, and I'll check with my mom to make sure I can be late for dinner Wednesday night. Thank you.
Okay. And, or we could bring it up possibly during new business, but I think it'd be best to have a motion today. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Messer, what is the legal basis for the lawsuit? What's our argument?
That Escambia County has breached the contract, the exclusive franchise is a contract, has breached the contract by allowing the City of Gulf Breeze to have a non-exclusive franchise. In other words, we either have a contract that gives us the exclusive right, or we don't. And if we have it, then it's ours. If we don't have it, then it's not worth very much to us. Now, the City of Gulf Breeze, I believe, has exposed itself to a tort claim of tortious interference with a business relationship. However, under the law, we're going to have to give them six months' notice before we can file that claim. So the lawsuit would be a breach-of-contract lawsuit against the Escambia County with hopefully an injunction, but I don't know what good the injunction's going to do if the gas is already turned off. I don't think any judge that's, you know, I would struggle to believe a judge would order us to turn the gas off once it's been turned on. And then we wait six months for the tortious interference claim. In the meantime, you know, maybe something can be worked out. Now, the terms and conditions of the contract, the nuances, the prices, the transmission, all that stuff has pretty much been worked out. The sticking point has invariably been this. No matter what language is used, it is clear that the City of Gulf Breeze wants that franchise to service the beach, and that's the sticking point. It's been the sticking point ever since it's began, and I presume it's going to be the sticking point Wednesday night. So really, we're not arguing about the terms and conditions of the contract. You're really arguing about the essence of your right to supply natural gas to the beach and indeed countywide. Because if the franchise is allowed to be eroded in this case, then you can pick a half a dozen other cases. The franchise then looks like Swiss cheese.
Okay, thank you. That's.
And since we have no agreement right now with Gulf Breeze, haven't had one for years, to shut the gas off. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I took it that way.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? I would like for their, well, no, 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 no. I'd really like to have a motion here, so we'll have something to vote on Thursday night. I know sometimes if we don't do something in committee, people question whether we have the right to do it on Thursday night or not. So I'd rather have a motion today. And what would you like for that motion to be? If you stayed, it's somebody else's move. The, I would propose that the motion simply authorize the initiation of immediate legal proceedings against Escambia County to enforce our exclusive gas franchise because the county's eminent award of a non-exclusive franchise to the City of Gulf Breeze would compromise a significant legal right of the city prior to the full compliance with the provisions of Florida Statute, Chapter 164.101.
So moved.
Seven.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Dr. Lou.
I'm not an attorney, so you have to help me. I support it 100%. My only question is, will it get us into any legal trouble if we pass this before our meeting Wednesday? See, in other words, what I'm saying is, we're making a decision now based on what we're going to be asked to give on Wednesday, and so we're precluding now. Am I making sense to anybody?
Yes, sir. I think now what we're asking for is a sense of the council.
Okay.
For a vote on Thursday night.
For a vote on Thursday.
For a vote on Thursday night, but I can assure everyone that we're certainly going to negotiate in good faith Wednesday.
Okay.
We're just giving him the authority of things that are terms.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm on board. I just didn't want to do anything that would hurt us down the road on Wednesday.
Mr. Reynolds.
I think the best way of looking at it, ladies and gentlemen, is that we're using this as a placeholder for then allowing us to discuss the topic then on Thursday night after the Wednesday meeting.
Dr. Pratt.
And I'm guessing that this likely will pass unanimously, but I would like to ask that we don't put it on the consent agenda.
No.
Simply because we, I'm agreeing to a placeholder. I'm not necessarily agreeing to the motion, if that makes any sense.
Yes. And I think the clerk understands that. Yes, okay. Assuming it passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, are there any comments from anyone else? From the public? Sing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Determination of City Council meeting frequency. Mr. Johnson, I know this has been a favorite of yours for three years.
Yeah, well, you know, I, if, in my travels in our community, it's come up several times about why we seem to meet so frequently. If you look at the agenda that we had today, there's actually really nothing that, you know, that was earth-shaking, that couldn't wait to one meeting a month. Currently, we meet four months a year. We have committed the whole on Monday and Thursday, one week out of those four months. So, you know, the sky hasn't fallen. We've had opportunities for citizen input, and we will continue to have that. You know, if there's a, if there's a chance that during those other eight months that we have more than one weekly meetings, that we could call a special meeting. I believe in the charter it states that three council persons can call a special meeting, and possibly the mayor too, and I could ask for a clarification from Mr. Messer on that. But, you know, what I'm hearing is why the frequency of meetings, you know, it seems to be that, you know, we just seem to meet so often. And again, four months a year, we only meet the one week. So I wanted to bring it forward and have it discussed. I don't know how my other council members feel about that because I can't discuss it with them. So I would be in favor of us taking a look at that. I know June and July we'll be meeting that one week, and then November, December. So I'd like to hear from my other council members how their feeling is, what their feelings are on that. Thank you.
Let me explain how we got to the schedule that we do now. It's another one of those things that I can take fault on. Right after I was elected council president, one of the first things the city clerk did said, "Mr. President, when do you want to meet and how often?" And pretty much I took the easy road out. Let's follow the schedule that we've followed the last four years on council. And she pointed out the months that traditionally we only had the one meeting. Then she wanted to know if I wanted to adjust, would it be the second and fourth Thursday with the preceding Mondays for committee meetings or what? And I saw no reason to change that. And I'm guessing, based on that, I could probably make the adjustment myself. I'm not willing to do that. I would like to have a vote on it by members of council, but let me tell you, I agree entirely with your position on this. If, and I believe the mayor can call a special meeting of the city council, so if there's something the mayor really needs to get done now, provided there's the proper notification procedures for the public, he can go ahead and do that. So it's not like we're going to have pressing business that's going to get delayed for two or three weeks. The mayor will call us into session. As you said, any three members of council that are interested in that. I think it's only happened once in about the last 20 or 25 years, and that was just a couple of years ago that that happened. And then I believe the council president can do it as well, but I'd have to go back and review that. But anyway, there's plenty of opportunities for us to have the second, third, fourth meeting in a month if necessary. And there's definitely no requirement for us to have to go through the committee system. You know, we can just go straight to council. So that in mind, I would support us adjusting our meeting schedule. I don't know if anybody's prepared to move on that today or not, but yes.
Well, I'm certainly not going to support having just one meeting a month. I think if the council were doing its job, we would be bringing a lot more things to the agenda, and that really troubles me. We have two branches of government here, the legislative branch and the executive branch. I think the executive branch is quite active in putting things on the agenda, and the legislative branch should be also. And it really bothers me that when I look at the agenda, it's mostly the mayor's agenda. It should not be that way. It should not be that way. And Councilman Gerald suggested that we have a meeting to discuss our strategic plan and possibly modify it. I think that we should be looking at...
Well, before you move on to the next thing, on that strategic plan, that was discussed the last committee meeting. I was not here for that, and I didn't...what became of that? Did you guys vote on it?
I believe that we did vote to have a workshop type of day to discuss the strategic plan. And especially at this point, I would not be in favor of changing to once a month because we don't even have a staff yet. And I think it's just another attempt to make this council weak. There are certain people in this council who have unfettered access to the mayor's office, and I would suspect that maybe some persons don't feel the need to have more frequent council meetings. I do because I am, I do not have unfettered access to the mayor's office. I'm much more interested in being an effective legislative body than I am in having unfettered access to the executive branch. So...
Would you support meeting every day? Having a meeting every day?
No, I don't support having a meeting every day, but I support continuing the way that we are presently meeting. I would also like to see us go back to the committee system. It's possible I could support council meeting once a month if we had the committee system back. That's a possibility. But I definitely do not support having just one meeting a month. I mean, and if you combined everything that we have on the agendas for the two times we meet during the month, and if we're only meeting one time, we're going to have an extremely long agenda. And so, I would not, I just don't think it's...
Well, what about June and July, having one meeting a month then?
Actually, I'm not in favor of only having...
But that's what we've done historically.
I know we do. I know.
Okay.
But I guess that's to accommodate people who want to go on vacation or something. I don't know. I wasn't part of that decision. But that's, anyway, that's my position, and I'm not going to support it.
All right, Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, folks, a few minutes and a couple of hours ago, we listened to a group of people who expressed their concerns about not being included in what was going on. And I think after what we heard today, to move to one meeting per month would extend that even worse because if we were to have to tell them today to come back in a month and we'll reconsider it, it would have been a disaster. So, I can't support once a month either. I think with the amount of business that we're doing, the new things that are coming before the council and through the mayor's office, it's kind of like a rapid fire, and we need to keep in touch with the public. And twice a month is not an inconvenience to me.
Well, and as far as the legislative part of being more active, I'm just going to guess that's a shot at me, but that's okay. I still have my bulletproof vest on. But any one of you can get something put on the agenda. Any one of you can do that. So, if you're interested in seeing an active legislative body, submit memorandum with your recommendation on there and your background.
How many council actions are on that agenda today?
Zero. And since the beginning of the year, it has been open for any one of you to put something on that agenda. So, if we're not doing our job according to some people, then it's a collective and a singular problem. It doesn't just fall to the president of the council, and it's certainly not the mayor's fault. And so...
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry that Ms. Myers stepped out. I was going to pull Mr. Gerald's history lesson for us all first. When the Charter Review Commission came to the council with their free recommendation to get the council's feedback, one of the things they had in the new charter was that the council would meet twice a month. And the recommendation back was, "Make it flexible because there are times," especially with Christmas time, we have a hard time finding two weeks that make sense to meet and with Thanksgiving as well. And then the summer meetings that had gotten to one meeting a month were, the reasoning, as I understood it when we switched to that, was that was when we were having budget meetings, so we had many meetings then, and those meetings did start at nine in the morning. And you recall, we were here till seven at night as well. So, it was very much, okay, we're having to do all this other budget stuff, so we're just going to slam ourselves on the one week in the summer months. I have reservations about switching to one meeting a month. First, I mean, I will say this meeting, I'm thinking we're getting to the end, and I'm still able to think, my stomach's not growling, it's a good sign. If we go to one meeting a month, we aren't going to have fewer items. We will likely have two big things that will have public input, and it will, again, go longer. So, I think that breaking up our business is good for our ability to think at minimum. You know, I'm not a pomp and circumstance kind of person. You know, a lot of these things will still be a consent agenda thing, and maybe one big Thursday night meeting could make sense because we tend to do mostly a lot of awards and things like that. If there was a way to compress some of that, that would make sense. But with the committees, I feel like we do some amount of work, and this really is the public's chance to hear what's going on in the government. Additionally, and I think that, you know, your comment about there are no council agenda items on here, well, I will at least say that I tried to get a council agenda item on there about the complete streets, and Mr. Reynolds explained, "That's not our role. We aren't supposed to be coming with ordinances." So, I think we, as a council, need to figure out what our role should be. If we want to have council action items, how do we do that? Because it's not clear to me. I mean, I was trying to do something that I thought would be somewhat consent.
Well, if you come up with a committee memorandum that you submit for the agenda and you give it to Ms. Major, it gets distributed to all of us. It's a public record, so there's no violation of the sunshine law. It is up to the council president to put it on a particular, like if I see that the mayor has got a lot of items or every single council member has got something, you know, I may have to limit it and put it off to another time. And now, or you can bring them to a meeting like today and says, "This is something," and rather than leaving it up to Sam Hall, is leave it up to the committee to put that onto the next agenda. So, the idea that the council president is not doing his job, and I, you know, I took it as a reflection, I mean, every single member here can submit that. And if we had a staff of five people, you're still going to have to do the majority of your work, your research, because they're going to be doing other things. Mayor's got 850 people to put his agenda together, and some might even argue that it's a mighty light agenda when you've got 850 people to support. And so, if you want something on the agenda, you just have to let me know, but it's got to be well thought out with specific recommendation on there. Submit it to Ms. Major, she'll get it to me and to all the other council members, and then we can have a very, very full, active legislative agenda. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify what I told Councilwoman Pratt. What I specifically was referring to was bringing legislation in front of this body that had not been properly vetted by the experts that you actually have here as a staff. You know, that's what our role is. Our role is to ensure that, as a matter of fact, I think, I don't think there's any problem at all with bringing forward ideas to this body and then allowing staff the opportunity to go back and say, "Okay," which is exactly, by the way, what we're doing with the complete streets right now. You will see something in that in the near future, which is what your intent was. But coming forward with legislation and having this body adopt it or not adopt it without it going through your professional staff is not what this body is all about. And so, that's what I was talking about, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Finished a little bit, and I guess that's the question I'm struggling with as a council member, is if all of the initiatives from the council need to be vetted by the mayor's office, then there really should never be a council action section of this. And so, I guess my question is, as a council, what do we believe our role should be in directing the motion of this government? And because at this point, you know, we don't have the authority to say to Mr. Reynolds, "Hey, get those people on this. We want that. This is a priority of the council." And so, you know, complete streets, partially, I pushed on that as sort of a test. How do we work? And basically, you know, I think we're generally in agreement that that's something we want to do. The mayor's generally in agreement. So, how do we, how do we, as a council, push our agenda? And it's clear to me that in the way that has gone, that we still have to wait and make sure the mayor is in agreement before we can do anything. And so, if that's the way the council wants to be, then there really is no reason to put a council action portion on the agenda. But I would say that having sat in on the urban advisory committee, I think we should be able to provide a forum for input on ideas, and, you know, that committee really should just be the CRA. We should be sitting here saying, "What are our goals for the next three to five years for the downtown?" But we've abdicated that responsibility. And so, I think that, you know, if we do go to the one meeting a month, it might make sense for us then to have a workshop every month where we talk about one of our strategic goal themes and say, "Okay, how do we want to move that in the next three to five years? And what are the ideas and what's the direction?" I just think that at some point, we, as a council, need to decide whether we are just reactionary or if we are proactive. That's sort of the direction I'm feeling right now.
Well, and, you know, and I agree with everything that you've had to say, Dr. Pratt. I know that under the old system of government, every now and then I'd just have one of these really brilliant ideas and, you know, and I'd go and do my research on things and, you know, I'd go to Mr. Kobe, and we'd sit down and talk about it, and he was always very, very patient with me, let me have my say, and then he would says, "But, councilman," he says, "I wish we could do that, but..." You know, and so, I could have it in memorandum form. I'd have the recommendation, the summary, everything, and then Mr. Kobe just gives me one really good reason why it can't be done or it's just really a bad idea. There were a few things that we disagreed on that I, you know, he tried to talk me out of. I was adamant about it. Admiral Mason retention pond was not my idea, but it was one of those things that I really wanted to see done, and it was, it got put onto the back burner here at City Hall. PEDC was wanting to go forward with the technology park over there, but they were reluctant to do that without the retention pond. And, you know, I insisted on that. I'm not a miracle worker. I just didn't let it fall off of anybody's radar, and they made it happen. And so, that was something that was legislative that was done from two different bodies, and it was never put on a specific agenda as council action. It came as a recommendation, you know, from what was then the executive staff. And so, as far as the legislative part not doing its job, I think there's a certain amount of criticism that we deserve on that. But we're here late in the game. Is, if you remember back on the previous council, anticipating that things were going to be different, that I was one of the guys that really tried to get us to start thinking about putting together, you know, who the council was going to be under that new form of government, including hiring our staff ahead of time, before we had an executive that we had to negotiate with or battle with, you know, and we didn't do it. We came in in January, new government, one month, two months, three months goes by, we haven't done anything. We lost our chance to have an audit function, you know, that would help Ms. Myers with her flow of information. That didn't happen. The mayor, quite expertly, whether he did it on his own or with great advice of those around him, trumped this council, and it's in action at every turn. He's an extremely popular mayor, and it's going to be very difficult for us to turn around how we operate. I don't see it's impossible, but it's...
Point of order. You know, point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Parliamentarian?
It's not debatable. It's not debatable.
I feel like a Toriador.
Yeah.
It's not.
I don't think we can have a point of order on a discussion. I mean, there's no motion to have a point of order on. I think we just sort of go until someone loses stamina.
Okay.
Well, it seems like to me that the president is going on and on and on and on. I think that's inappropriate. There's another council person here at the table who's had his hand up for a while wanting to speak on this issue, and I would like for...
Yes.
I think that the president has made his point, and it's time to move on and allow somebody else to speak who hasn't spoken.
Okay. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things. I wish I'd be the one that would be in favor of once-a-month meetings. I have a 6 o'clock meeting in about 17 minutes that I have to go referee, so I'm going to have to leave.
Sure you don't need a referee?
No, I'm going to referee. I can handle it. But in any case, you'll still have a quorum, but I need to depart at this time.
Okay.
And I would like to put on the next committee of the whole meeting a discussion of, so that we can set the date, time, and location for our strategic planning session. We need to do that.
Okay. Do you have any recollection of why that didn't get any traction last meeting?
No, the last thing I remember about it, we were talking about a facilitator, and I think your name came up. But if we put it on the next agenda, we should be able to clear it up and move forward. I had wanted to mention the curfew because the county will be the ones that will have to put it on the agenda, as explained to me by David Stafford. However, if we're going to sue them, they might not want to cooperate. We're making enemies. So, I don't know where to put it now, but...
Well, when we get to that point in the meeting, I'll bring up the strategic planning for us to get it on.
Okay. But we need to go ahead and do that because there still needs to be some clarity of the roles and relationships that need to be delineated.
Okay.
And I'll see you guys on, at 5:30 on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, here in this room. Okay. Ms. Myers?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
The vice chair would like to speak.
On this issue of changing the meetings, I haven't heard any compelling reasons as to why we should change. I really feel uncomfortable having that long period of time before we meet, recognizing there are also limitations as to what we can do or whatever the case may be. But we have an obligation to our constituents, or I do, and some of the things that they brought forth to me, probably I would like to share them with the council as a whole. I just haven't heard any compelling strong reason, except we, I haven't heard any. So, I would not be in favor of changing the meetings at this time.
Okay. There's not, well, Ms. Deuce, I, there's, look, there doesn't seem to be any interest in this, except possibly from Mr. Johnson and myself, and there's no motion on the floor, so I'm just going to move on to the next item. All right. Consent agenda items. All items approved unanimously by the committee of the whole, and that was all six of the actions from the mayor. Is that right?
Well, is number four...
Number four. Let me see here. Okay. That's right.
Move the approval.
One, two, three, five, and six. Okay.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and second discussion. On favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Do you have anything to say about the information items? Mr. Reynolds?
No, Mr. President.
Okay. That brings us to council of the whole agenda request and council request of the mayor's office. I just want to put forward Mr. Gerald's request that at our next committee of the whole meeting, that we schedule a date, time specific for our strategic, strategic planning committee. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
There's motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. If you got that, Madam Kirk? Yeah. Workshop, yeah. Same thing that we had the last committee meeting, okay? Just take it right from there. Okay, Mr. Townsend.
I'd like to possibly see if we can get some information noted on, and I guess it's happening, it might be happening all over town, but I think ECU is doing something to our roads, doing something to the drainage or whatever. But they are really leaving the roads in a deplorable condition all over the West Side. I don't, I don't think, or I hope, that isn't a finished product what they, how they left the roads, but I made mention of it to Mr. Gaza, and I don't know whether he mentioned it to you or not, Bill, but I'm just wondering, specifically on East Street, there's just two big holes everywhere, and they just left it there. If they got to come back and do some smoothing out, possibly they need to put a barrier that shows that the roads are under repair. They've done some old government, they're all over the West Side, and I don't know any, Ryan District and my district, and the roads are just terrible. What they're doing, I don't know.
Yes, sir, and I'll find out immediately and get word out to everybody tomorrow morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Who's in charge?
Yes. Go ahead.
I would like to see us have an agenda item to discuss further what Councilwoman Pratt brought up about how this council adopts and drafts ordinances. I have a real serious problem with the constitutionality of the city council being required to send an ordinance to the mayor's office to have it vetted. I mean, can you imagine Congress sending laws to the president to be vetted before they're brought and voted on by Congress? Or the state legislature?
Ms. Myers, this is not that proportion of the meeting.
I know, I'm asking, but...
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm saying that I think it should be an agenda item for discussion. If the legislative body is going to legislate, we need to know what process is in place for us to legislate. So I'm making a motion that this item be put on the agenda for the next committee of the whole, that we have a discussion on the process of getting ordinances before this body to be voted on.
I'm going to withhold a second for a minute in that I think that partially, I think I would like to see us discuss that as part of the strategic planning, you know, what, as we, what is, what is our plan for implementing anything? I think that could fit in that strategic planning process personally, how we...
I agree, and it dies for a lack of a second. Now, the, I worked on Capitol Hill. Gentlemen over there worked on Capitol Hill. And back in the eighties, when I was working on Capitol Hill, we had over 25,000 employees that did that. We're, our staff, we have to depend on the staff that the city has. They have over 25,000 employees, and a lot of that legislation is not even written by the members of Congress themselves, it's written by other organizations and presented by members of Congress.
Well, this brings me to the point of why we need our own staff person, our persons.
Okay. Okay. Down.
Just as a point of information, we have met and screened out at least five individuals that we're hoping to bring forth to the council for consideration. So at the last couple of meetings ago, you tasked us to do that, tasked the committee, and we have met, and we have screened them out, and now we are on the process of making a recommendation to you, or asking how you want to come up with the final selection. So we are on top of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, we're giving ourselves Sundays off.
I have a few either information or agenda items. We had the issue of the CDBG grant, and it reminded me that the Housing Department is currently without a director, and that's our job is to approve the department heads. And we forget that that department head is also over planning and inspection. It's a pretty big department, and I was hoping that the mayor's office would let us know what their plan is for getting that person in place, because we need to, it's an important function that I see of our government, and I think we need to make sure that there's an adequate person in charge. So if we could just get an update written, whatever.
Would it be accessible for Mr. Reynolds to just send out his emails like he normally does?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it doesn't need to be discussed, but I just like the timeframe and where we are in that process. Second, the League of Cities person discussed advocacy, and historically, we've had presentations by the lobbyists on where, what we're lobbying about and how we did. And so I was hoping we could get a presentation in the near future from whomever is lobbying on behalf of the city and what we were trying to get. And third...
Do we still have the May Garden group for that?
No, sir.
Okay.
The, at some point in various times, there's been discussion of that the mayor will obey all valid ordinances, and I hope that we can get any ordinances that have been determined invalid to this council. I mean, if you think about the division of powers, there's somewhere, there's a Supreme Court that decides that, but at least the Congress is told, hey, your laws aren't valid, and you have a chance to fix them. So if we can...
And, Mr. President, if I can address that right here and put this to rest hopefully, and I know that Councilwoman Pratt has brought this up a couple of times, how about if I just say all ordinances?
Are valid.
All ordinances are presumed valid unless otherwise determined to be so. So when I say valid ordinances, I probably just should have said ordinances.
Well, I will, I will say that when you had said valid, it triggered in me a recollection of the, there's the ordinance that says all bonuses for city employees should come before the council. We were told, or I was told in private meetings, that that ordinance is not valid because of the Allen Norton Blue Letter. But it's currently on the books, and if it's not valid, we need to amend our ordinances. And so if there are others like that, I think we need to, because that's what I read as our law, and if it's not our law, we need to deal with it.
And I guess the issue is, is that oftentimes, I mean, you know, as you, trust me, we need to go through the whole...
Sure, but...
Book of ordinances.
But if there are things...
But the bottom line is, is that when you find something that's not valid, that's when you make that determination and you tell everybody. It's not like we're sitting around and saying, this ordinance is not valid, this ordinance is valid. So you have to have case and controversy that brings it up, and then we take a look at it.
And I guess my point is that that discussion happened last fall, but if you go to munico.com now, it's still on the books, because we haven't, we haven't amended the ordinances. The mayor can't just erase ordinances, we have to amend them. And so I would like for there to be a policy in place somehow that, that if an ordinance is deemed invalid in some form or another, we...
So you're, so what you're asking for then is not that they go through and research the entire city code, but on that one issue and then in future issues, that if there is that conflict, is that we either resolve that conflict to one side or the other, and if need be, to amend the ordinances to conform? That makes...
Yeah, I'm not saying go through it all, but, you know, if it comes up, make a policy that at the next council meeting or whatever, we're asked to amend it, and we discuss it, and amend it in a way that we think follows the law and might meet our goals.
I think that's something that the mayor would probably be interested in himself, you know, just keeping her books clean.
Yeah. So it's not for next agenda, but if, if the attorney finds something that needs to be amended, if there are ordinances we need to change, then bring them to us.
And you don't need to vote, I'm just going to ask you on the one issue that Ms., Dr. Pratt is speaking of, is see if and how we need to amend that particular part of the code, and, but to consider her request in general for all future actions of that sort. Okay? Second enough?
That's...
Okay, anything else? For a chair.